And this is all based on our school district policies. These aren't rules I'm making up, these are board policies. As the board president, I'm responsible for running the meeting and I will interrupt and warn people or potentially terminate someone's right to speak if the statement's too lengthy. Do over three minutes. If it's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, I hope that doesn't happen later, I'm comfortable. Our board policy limits the entire public comment section to one hour, but we can vote as a board if we decide to extend that. We ask everyone, just treat everyone with respect, you know, basic courtesy. But I'd also ask people like to refrain from clapping, cheering, and certainly from booing or making any kind of trocaritary comments. Again, just common courtesy. I also want to highlight that we did receive board comments this month. We have nineteen, they're available for the public to read. Those are emails from people. Those will continue in the future, so I encourage people to do that. It's an effective way for board members to get information to the public. That's all I had. Oh, I guess I'll point out one other thing so people know, we are live streaming. So if you can't attend the meeting in the future, you can still watch our school videos. The camera's right over there, so people can watch tonight and it will be posted then on our website. With all that being said, former board member Phil Ketterhagen, first up.
Yes, I'm Phil Ketterhagen, two thousand Crossway Road, Burlington. And my comment is directly toward critical race theory. When I was on the board, you know, all the board members that were on the board, I know that I always asked them when a big issue came up, did you do your homework? I'm asking you to do your homework on critical race theory. You need to be done doing your homework. I want you to look into a mirror. And that image that's looking back at you in the mirror, I want you to ask that image, am I racist? In a second, am I an oppressor? Thank you.
Stacy Coleman, first.
Hi, this is Stacy Coleman, two ninety two, Cary, Rockaway, Wisconsin. And I just, I wanted to touch on another critical race theory. It's not fair, but... I did not know about critical race theory before, or all this is covered up. And I decided I wanted to look into it further and maybe do not like what we have discovered about critical race theory, equity, or what are related. We decided to pace on it to hide it. It is critical race theory. This is not about cranching students and staff together. This is about creating a mission. It's very similar to when schools decide to talk about bullying, take on bullying. And it's, it gives bullying the power when you talk about bullying. And stop bullying, don't get bullied. What actually happens is it makes the bullying rise, which we're bullying. And that's similar to what's happened with CFT. The more energy that we give racism, the more that these kids will believe they're racist, will call other kids racist, and just feed the beast that we are not, by the way. I don't agree with DPI's decision. I'm disappointed and confused on why this wasn't challenged. When they came up with this conclusion in two days, I never got a survey. Pretty sure a lot of people in the city and the town didn't get a survey. So the fact that they've decided to label us racism or racist, I find absolutely appalling. And I would like to see some leadership stand up for people whose community and the children to be their voice and actually start allowing them to be themselves. And please do not allow critical race theory as a gender to continue to be pushed to the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Melby.
Aaron Melby, two eight, two one, Circle Drive. First, I want to thank you for getting us back into in-person meetings with actual public comment. Being able to see each other in person is critical for communication, transparency, and accountability. My main concern tonight is how BASD has been backed into a corner by the recent DPI rulings. This is a bureaucracy at its finest. The state seemingly believes Burlington is incapable of taking responsible action steps on its own in regards to teaching and disciplining our own children equally regardless of race, gender, beliefs, et cetera. I take this personally, and you should too. Burlington is filled with intelligent, capable people. We don't need Big Brother, like we're managing our district. We certainly don't need to hire a director of equity or whatever we're calling it now to come in and tell us how to treat our students with fairness and respect. I truly believe our students, our teachers, and faculty already know how to do that. I believe in equity in schools. Yes, I said equity and not just equality. Our teachers have a responsibility to give students what they need to pass each class, grade level, and eventually graduate high school. If a student is struggling academically, I expect our teachers to recognize that and give a little extra help to those students who, those students or give them the resources needed to advance. I do, however, have a problem with assuming that just because a child is a minority, that they need extra help. Or if a child is white, that they need less attention. Given what I've read of the Corrective Action Plan, the National Equity Project, yeah, the National Equity Project, and the Director of Equity position, my fear is that too much attention will be given to race, skin color, and culture and not enough on actual needs of students. I want to state that I'm finally, that I'm fully opposed to hiring a Director of Equity by that name or another. This being said, as reports come coming from the unnecessary DPI mandated audits, please don't be bowied into making decisions or making changes going forward. We're totally capable of making decisions for our own district. And after all, who knows our community and what we need better than us? Act consultants from Madison and certainly not any activists from UCLA. And lastly, and it's not on our agenda tonight, but I urge you to keep masks optional for the field. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Mueller.
Hi, Ryan Mueller, zero six one two, Cedar Drive. Good evening, board members. BASD will not get a fair, unbiased audit from either Dan Lawson or ICS Equity. I urge this board to review audit results from both entities with a high degree of skepticism and ignore all recommendations that do not come from a place of unbiased objectivity. If the board was able to properly research and vet Dan Lawson, who would find a Facebook post he made for a BLM rally on June fourth, twenty twenty, where he advocates for removing police mayors of schools? This board would have found his work a narrow stroll to policy recommendations that does not consider the broader picture or unintended consequences of those recommendations. Does this district really want to proceed with and take recommendations from someone who appears to be active within a group whose stated goal is to disrupt pandemics? We really want advice that will jeopardize our children's safety. ICS Equity was sold by Mr. Klein as a group that knows southeast Wisconsin, but it may not mention that their recommendations have been an abject failure in terms of improving both achievement apps and the meaning of inclusion for students. The National North Carolina School District engaged ICS Equity for three years at a cost of over one hundred thousand dollars. For their investment, the National School District went from having the fifth largest achievement gap between black and white students in North Carolina in two thousand seventeen, when the district started its engagement, to the largest achievement gap in North Carolina in twenty twenty. The Ellsworth School Board just last month voted to halt all equity and inclusion for, that dates back to two thousand twelve, when they first engaged with ICS to help implement equity programs. And they did this because their achievement gaps were getting bigger year over year and their students were feeling a declining sense of belonging. It is also worthy to know that ICS Equity implements their programs through the lens of CFT. Does this sound like a consulting that is going to give us a fair, unbiased audit? Does BASD really want to take the advice of a consulting that has set its plans back in terms of progress towards closing achievement gaps and making students feel more included? According to the plan submitted to DPI, Burlington School District needs to complete two audits, but in the submitted and approved correction plan, there is no timetable established as to when BASD must create a plan to implement the recommendations on the audit and subsequently submit it to DPI. It merely states on page two that BASD will create a plan to implement the recommendations and submit to DPI. Given the lack of time volume to respond to audit findings, I urge this board to proceed with caution once the results of the audit are announced and carefully consider whether the results are truly unbiased findings.
Thank you. Bonnie Ketterbie.
Bonnie Ketterhagen, two thousand Crossway Road, Burlington, Wisconsin. First, thank you for meeting in person. We appreciate it, we like our voices heard for these three minutes. Thank you for continuing to record them, that's very helpful to the other hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of people that watch it. I would like to say that if we're in the efforts of having a deficit in our budget, how can you take one-time money and hire a whole new director of whatever you want to call it? Or even fathom the formation of a new FTE? That even if for the first year, what about year two, three, four, thirty-five, thirty-six? That is all right on the taxpayers' shoulders. This will not fall away. In a district that is high, is heavy in the administrative FTEs, you just cannot afford to be hiring people at this time and creating positions. Please also understand that Portland, Oregon has taught critical race theory for ten years and look at the summer they had last year. We don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Misty Gilbert.
Misty Gilbert, the G C thirty-seven, State Department thirty-six. First, I think while convening in person is long overdue and deeply appreciated, critical race theory, equity initiatives, transformative social, emotional learning, diversity and inclusion, culturally responsive teaching, implicit bias, anti-racism, and as a disanecdote racism. No matter what you call it, or what buzzword you want to use for the day, what is set to do is all the children of this district is a part of it. This movement isn't one of equality. It's teaching children from a very young age, whether they're white, that they have systemic privilege. They didn't earn what they have, they can't forgive that. They should feel guilty for being white, and they must atone for the sins of their ancestors. It teaches children to learn that no matter how hard they work, they will sit in the number, be on the same level as their white parents. That they deserve additional resources because they couldn't possibly achieve the same outcomes as white kids. And what I find most appalling is it forces innocent little children to see their friends in strange colors and get mad to their teacher. You're allowing this district, our children, to be used as pawns in a very political game. No matter what you say, it's political. Now, the same parents in this movement argue against our children being taught accurate history, but without the sting from the left or the right. Curricula in this district could use a bit of overhaul. A quick example. In sixth grade, my son and his five friends had yet to be taught free brush to the West River. I think that's the typical. It was said during YouTube, that fighting DPI would be too expensive. What power not to put on our children? I would spend anything or I would bang barb and steel for my child. Instead of paying a hundred thousand plus to a halfway director, whatever label you want to put on him to master who he is, and then all the taxpayer, and you're going to have to shell off the staff trainings and the whole curriculum, why not take the stand for all the children? Push back on DPI, then B C T R, and be a support for all of the families in the community. Bring us together. Have parent education seminars and child development. Sponsor funding community events so families of all backgrounds and color can come together. We feel connected. Have parent listening sessions, so issues or concerns can be addressed before they become a media matter. Most importantly, remember that parents are responsible for instilling values and morals. Teachers are paid to educate our children so they can compete in the world. Unless they can be the artists, they have a lot of cash flow to do.
Thank you. Rich Strong.
Hi, I'm Rich Strong, seventeen ninety-five, Nambul, Burlington, Wisconsin. Couple of things I'd like to address before I get my comments. One, I'd like to congratulate Connie Zenon on her upcoming retirement. She's done a great service to the community and school district. Well deserved, taking forward your retirement. Second thing I'd like to point out is just congratulations to Myra Brown, the General Vichla. We haven't met in person, but congratulations, I know her reelection, re-elections last fall were resembling a few of the renovations. I'd like to turn my comments towards critical race theory as well. One of the leading proponents, and whose materials were actually used in a recent meeting for the city of Burlington, Egon X. Tandy. He recently writes in a couple of art opinion pieces, "To say that there is widespread racial inequity caused by widespread racism, which makes the United States racist, isn't an opinion, isn't a partisan position, isn't a doctrine, isn't a left-wing construct, isn't anti-white, isn't anti-American. It is a fact." I'm sorry, this is not something that we should institute in the teaching of our children in our school system. In another opinion piece, he writes, "White privileges are an alternative advantage of racism afforded to people identified as white, whether white people recognize them or deny them. To be whitestly afforded one's individuality, afforded the presumption of innocence, afforded the presumption of intelligence, afforded empathy of climate and rage, afforded distortion of moral and power, afforded opportunities to white network, afforded well-filled homes and resource-rich schools, afforded the ability to vote critically and easily." This is something, again, that we should not be teaching in our schools. I believe that it's harmful for children and whether it's called critical race theory or as many other people have pointed out here, equity takes many different forms. I would urge you to push back against DPI and their some of the liberal narratives that were handed down, their corrective action plan, kind of pushing us in this direction. I think the community of Burlington is waking up and you can see that who's here tonight, they're starting to pay attention to us, what's going on. And I think you're going to see more and more people at these meetings just watching and discouraging the board to push back against this. So thank you for your time, thank you for hearing us in person, we're forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Rebecca Johnson. Okay, perfectly funny. Kevin Johnson. Okay, that's fine, me. Adrian Melby.
Adrian Melby, twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-one, Circle Drive, Burlington. Good evening and thank you for returning to in-person meetings. I recently had the pleasure of meeting Adam Coleman, the author of Black Victim to Black Victor, a book I would highly recommend that each of you try and read. I reached out to him this last week and asked him if he could speak to our school board a few sentences, what he would say. And this is what he sent me to pass up. "The travesty of Jim Crow laws was not how white people treated black people. It was how the government was utilized to enforce racialized policies which dictated the behavior of both white and black Americans. As representatives of a government institution, creating policies and educational standards surrounded by the premise of race puts you in a similar position as the people in the past that we chastise today. If we are to live in a multiracial society, pointing out our differences and enhancing perception of our inevitable successes or failures due to our pigmentation will only perpetrate the hatred that you plainly want to end. If you are doing this to persuade against what you think are black people's inevitable failures, then you are doing black people, like myself, a disservice. Placing blacks as constant victims only continues to reduce us to being agentless victims when we are America's victors. We do not need your pity and we do not need your saving. Our differences are only superficial and treating us differently only highlights how superficial racial policies are. If you want us to be equals in America, then treat us like one. Stop viewing us as the white man's burden and treat us as human beings with agency. If you truly want to help black people or any minority do something that previous government institutions have failed to do and stay out of our way." Quote from Adam Coleman. "Now, I for one, and I hope that others are with me, will continue to hold people accountable by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin. I urge you to do the same for all students, staff, teachers, administration, and the community at large. I urge you to hold true to the oath that you took when you were elected as school board members, which includes swearing that both the Constitution of the United States as well as the Constitution of Wisconsin, so help you God. As a parent of children who could be in BASD schools and as a taxpayer, I'm here to let you know that I will continue sending emails, I will continue to ask questions, and I will continue to be involved. We, the parents, are not going away."
Jim Crowley.
Jim Crowley, one six thirty-five, Critical Race Theory, Ellsworth. CPR is, CPR team that is mobile, but is in school. It's about my brother, he's in private. I'm blowing my daughter out of her own school. You're not going to shut this crap down, you're going to school. I heard you guys speak at your last school board meeting. I heard a lot of equity. That's CFT, that's what it is. It's about equality, that's what you should be talking about, not equity. I've been watching you guys on the school board. You're all a bunch of cowards, you don't have any backbone to stand up against anything. There's a problem there. Most of you have a backbone. You can't even have a public meeting with your, that's great for your power.
Hey, sir, I'm going to interrupt you right there. I think your comments, and forgive me for interrupting you, if your comments are starting to get personal.
No, they're not getting personal, I didn't say any names. You are for me, I'm speaking. Now, you're not, I'm pulling my daughter out of Burlington schools. You're not going to have some second grade teacher teach you some crap that shove crap down her throat about stuff she shouldn't be learning, she should be learning ABCs. Kids should be learning about who discovered the world. They're not learning that stuff. They're learning that everybody is racist. That's not right. Get a backbone.
Renee Heisey.
I was going to speak, I'm sorry. I was going to speak the same job. I met Adam Coleman and Adrian said it all, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Aaron Ramchak.
I'm Aaron Ramchak. So that's four five seven, I would choose in Burlington. I'm a director of break at Walder. I just want to clarify the connection of the administration over the course of years in the case of severe persistent racism is what caused DPI's ruling. If it's news to you, any of you, that there's racism in our schools, then consider yourselves lucky because you and your children are not moving on to the victims of racism. We can't continue to do things the way they've been done, and that's not just my opinion, that's a DPI mandate. I want to voice my support for the hiring of a Director of Equity. See what is controversial about this. The district has a lot of work to be done to address this issue. And ultimately, the answer of simply adding more to the plates of existing staff just doesn't seem sustainable. Yes, everyone will have a role, but there needs to be leadership from an individual who's trained in this work. All of our children benefit from learning about anti-racism. All of our children benefit from the critical analysis of our country's history. If the district is truly committed to this work, there needs to be investment to do this work.
Thank you. Laura Beaufeld.
Hi. Laura Beaufeld, coming through to fly a train street. I just wanted to take a moment, oh, hi, I see you guys, we have a lot of good people here.
Laura, make sure to direct your comments to us.
Actually, yes. Amazingly, I'm going to say that I agree with this man we have here. It's my fault, most of the members on this school are not holding up to what I have said they would be. I believe that there is one of you who has the backbone to stand up and be what is right. My children, we love together, a lot of you, I attended Burlington my entire education. Most of you who claim to be patriotic and try to get patriotism and try to racism, I have a perfect story of that. I'm adopted, I'm immigrant, we're rich. My children are considered first generation on a land that my blood, my ancestors cultivated. So when members of this community, including members on your school board, attack me, rub my name through the dirt, how does one not turn around and ask, why David? How does one not turn around and ask why the majority of the people in this room are white? Because that's the majority of the population of our community. So when people have finally stood up and said their experience, that they have handled this school district, we're told that we're lying, we're told that it didn't happen. Because most of you don't know that it happens. You notice that most of us aren't here. Do you know why that is? That's because most of us fear. There are members in this room that have started hate groups against us. There are members in this room that have threatened the lives of my family. Yet, we're told that we are the most cultivating violence. How is that so? And I have never asked or settled with who to intimidate anyone in this room. And my parts of organization should, you all know I'm part of B C T R. Some of you may know that I'm part of Revolution Red Beat, some of you may not. But the point is, I think a lot of communities, which are at least intimidated into something bad. It's not. We want all students within this school district to be given what they need to succeed. Whether that student is white, whether that student is gay, whether that student is black. There are different amounts of resources and support that each student needs. However, when a school records, and DPI's finally, sorry, they're an outside entity that came in to look at what's been going on within this school district, you have to take into account the numbers. The numbers don't lie. For those of us that still have questions about critical race theory, I'm not even asking that we teach critical race theory. I'm asking that we teach American history, what's improved, all of us. Thank you.
Kate Sibbitt.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kate Sibbitt, and I'm two six, and I'm there at a meeting next week, so I was coming. I have zero children, this is the second, I wasn't blessed with it, I wasn't a person who was a guy dating.
Hold on for a second, do you live in the Burlington area? I apologize, we're...
No, I have like, um, one minute.
Hold on for a second though, ma'am. Our policy dictates that you have to either be a resident or a...
You guys know that we're pulling up this lady, you guys know that...
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to interrupt you again, because... Yeah, I have no choice here, but our policy again is you have to be either a district resident. Okay, thank you. Is that it for public comments? All right, that's all we had for public comments today. Well, thank you again for...
This is a letter from a current official statement. He wanted to make sure that every board member got a copy of this letter. I know that it's probably not the way you normally do things, but this would be, wanted to have his voice heard.
Thank you. All right, well, I want to thank everyone again for having a chance to, for coming, first of all, and then also for the civil discussion that we had. Next on our agenda is correspondence and board communications.
Excuse me. I didn't sign up to speak, but I had that opportunity to say my... My statement is very great. Critical race theory or anything...
Hold on for a second, sir, before you start speaking. Yes, to answer your question, because it's new this time, let's allow it this time, the next meeting, please sign up and then please state your name and stand up if you can and your address.
My name is Tom, also make two four one five one, their way by a chance, still.
Okay, thank you.
My only point is that it's critical race theory, to my judgment, or call it anything you want, is a result of the culture. And I hope that this board of education, or the city of... I hope that this board of education or this administration has the right to impose that on our kids or our community without a referendum or tax, tax bill, as the members say, what's going on, to it including a hiring of people to administer this whole program. That's my, thank you for the.
Thank you. Moving on, our next agenda is correspondence and board communication. I do want to mention one thing normally Steve Pike, our superintendent's here, he's on vacation right now, which well, well needed and earned vacation. To my right, our, our current Assistant Superintendent Coniston, as Mr. Strong said, she's retiring, and Jill Oslinger, who will be our future Assistant Superintendent, is also joining, they're going to essentially take Steve's role in this meeting, you'll hear from them in a little bit. I also wanted to let the public know, the board is currently going through the process of our evaluation of the superintendent. By state law, we are required to evaluate our superintendent. We did that in closed session, but that's ongoing right now and it's a three, four-step process, so I just want to make sure the public knows. And then the other thing that I'll mention is for future meetings, we, some of board members have suggested some agenda items and I just want to make sure our board knows, I haven't forgotten, I would like to list, we're trying to find a good meeting, maybe it'll be next month or the month after, where we tackle some of these agenda items. If it's on the future horizon, I just want to make it, we know that. Any other board members that have correspondence or?
And something.
Taylor or something.
Your panelists at first.
I just want to recognize the leading softball team, maybe to the semifinals, and then shout out a couple, the S L C Player of the Year, Morgan Klein, and S L C, as I mentioned, Alexa Green.
Where's Andy?
I just have something that's fun that's going on in the summer. Sally Nye is the librarian for the elementary schools, and on her own, she does a summer reading program, and it's at a park or it's at the pool, and I go along to help out. She needs a little extra help with the kids and having a good teacher kind of enjoy that. And it's, I don't know, it's just fun to see kids doing what we as board are trying to do and that's do what's best for kids. To see them reading and enjoying reading and being together, and it's just a pleasure for me to, as a board member and as a citizen, just to see what's going on. She does that for no pay. She does that because she wants to have the kids keep reading in the summer. Just a lot of fun and I've learned a lot just the games and things that they've been playing with words, so it makes me want to go back in classroom, kind of, too old, but anyway, just a happy, happy thing that's going on on Wednesdays. So.
Anna Woodburn. All right, let's move on. Superintendent Wood was next.
Jill. So, yeah, that's, that's me this time, first time ever, so here we go. Just wanted to go and give some updates on some positive things happening within the school district this summer so far. So our high school had a Boundary Waters trip that has been, went on for quite some, some time now, and there was eighteen students that went.
Well, I think the racism's over, so I'm going to end it here. I just wanted to hear the public comments. This was a last-minute notification, so most people didn't know that this was going to be an in-person meeting. The last time Never Stop was here was sometime last year and about the same bullshit rhetoric that you heard tonight, you heard last time only T P R was there to support multiple community members. And you know, when you schedule things like this last minute and don't notify everybody that this is an in-person meeting, you know, those who need to speak up aren't able to. This shit's done intentionally. Fuck this school district. Talk to you guys later.